Now that you say that.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, July 25th, 2013 School Committee Meeting. The beginning at 7:00 PM, 7:05. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items which include regular session minutes of June 27th, 2013, special session minutes of July 9th, 2013, acceptance of warrants, numbers 01V14, 03V14, 05V14, 02P14, and 04P14. Along with, should I include the Baker Adams? Along with Baker Adams thank you notes.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, any discussions?
The thank you notes were very nice.
They were very nice, they were very nice.
Gracious.
Yes. Thank you for taking the time to send those along, the thank you notes.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no student representative yet. Do we have anyone from the audience, public comment, anyone that has any questions? No. Okay. Public agenda items, okay, we're gonna move along to the CIP candidate review. So come on up. Mr. Snyder.
Okay. So we are very excited because we have Mr. Snyder who's agreed to come forward and has expressed interest in being the school committee's CIP representative. As you remember, I think Joe's at, Jones is an ex-CEO member of the CIP. Michael Anderson, our facilities director, is on, but we do need a representative from the, from the district and the school committee. And Mr. Snyder has agreed to do this. So it's an appointment of the school committee, which is why you're here and thanks for making the time to come. I don't know if the school committee received any correspondence or information as to what you, maybe you're, you're, why you're interested in your background, Laura. Did anything go in the packet? No, so maybe you could just take a minute and talk a little bit about what, what brings you to, to this position?
Sure, I'm a new resident of Georgetown, been in the town approximately three years, two and a half years, I think. And I have a three-year-old who'll be joining the school system in another couple of years. So I, you know, obviously I have an interest in making sure that, that's a success and that he gets the best education we can, we can give him. And I have a background in, I wouldn't say capital planning, but facility planning. I do a lot of, I work with a lot of capital budgets. I'm actually managing some capital project budgets for Providence College. I do project work for University of Connecticut, so it's sort of in line with the type of work that I do.
You'd be very qualified for it. Be careful, you'll end up being the chair. Excellent.
That's great. It sounds exactly like what we're looking for.
Good match.
So how often does it meet? Does the committee meet?
Well, it didn't meet very much this year because they couldn't get a quorum together.
So that's why it's important that we, we have a representative that's going to, to be, now, it generally meets in the fall, right?
Right, to prepare for the spring, right.
As part of the whole budget process.
Now, would this position meet with the committee, the Capital Improvement Plan Committee and the school committee? Or just the Capital Improvement Plan Committee?
Well, generally, the way we've done it in the past has been that you, generally you meet with the Capital Improvement Committee. But then probably, you know, when we get ready to make recommendations, you know, you wanna get the input of the school committee as to what things that they feel should be priorities. So you might work with Mike and Joan and
True.
Come up with a, a series of things that you think, you know, makes sense and then come back and get the committee's, you know, approval of those things. And then you would just continue to meet with the CIP. Certainly if the committee wanted to have you come and make a report, they could request it.
True.
But generally speaking, it's not required that you come back like every meeting and make a report. It's, it's really
So you're working with the school committee but not necessarily attending the school committee meetings?
Correct, correct, yeah. If that works for you.
Can you tell me a little bit more about the Capital Improvement Committee? How many people are on it and who's the chair?
Well, there's a representative from, from major, major groups. All, I think, that have an interest in getting capital improvement money. So like, for example, in the past, Donnie Cudmore's represented the police department. He may, now that he's chief, may, may choose to have someone else do that. But the police were represented, I believe the fire
The highway.
Highway was. I think the water department, I think at one point Wayne Snow was the chair of the CIP. I think the town administrator is a non-voting member, I'm thinking. Joan is a non-voting member.
There's a selectman.
There's a selectman. So it's a, it's a representative group, like I said, of people who might have an interest in, in the capital planning and maybe accessing some of that money. And then what happens is everybody, all those groups bring proposals with anticipated costs. And then the committee really looks at, well, this is how much money we've got. And so what are gonna, you know, how are we gonna prioritize these? Some make it, some don't, some go on a multi-year plan. And then, but every year, this, the town now, I think through vote of town meeting, identified a certain percentage of money that gets put into the capital improvement. That, that was always the problem in the past. From what I understand from the history of this is there were plenty of people interested in serving. But then they got frustrated that they did all this work and then it was like, oh, sorry, no money. And then, so I think that when this kinda got revived, the, the necessary condition was, you know, let's not pull it together if we aren't gonna have any money. So I think that's when the, a certain percentage of money from some source, maybe it's free cash, I'm not sure. Certain amount of money from some source goes right into capital improvement. So there's always, you know, a small amount of money anyway.
So this position would, for lack of a better term, lobby on behalf of the committee for the prioritization of the school committee capital requests?
They would, you would do that, but it, it's also, you know, we have been very lucky, you know, over the last few years in particular with the people at the table that we really do try to look at it in the best interest of the town.
Sure.
I mean, yes, we, we obviously want the things that we need, but we realize that we, you know, we have to work with everybody else.
Sure.
And, you know, we've actually been very, I think, very successful in getting a number of things that have really helped us in the last couple of years, working in coordination with that group.
And is it a yearly appointment?
No, it, no, he, it's a three-year appointment.
Three year. Well, that's good.
I mean, he could come and say, I think one year's enough for me, which means that we'd have to go back out and look again. But as long as everything goes well and everybody's happy and
Right.
Then it's a three-year appointment.
I just wanna say thank you for stepping forward, you know, and being part of the town and volunteering your time. Because it's not just your time, it's your family's time also.
Sure.
And I really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Oh, I'm glad to be here.
Yeah, I, I think your background is a perfect fit, so that's, that's great.
Yeah, that's good.
So then you, you would just appoint him?
So the Chair will entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Greg Snyder to the Capital Improvement Plan Committee. Would it be effective immediately?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, you too.
All right.
We appreciate it.
This is the shortest meeting you'll have.
So one quick question, who will I hear from first and when, when will that be?
Laura.
Okay. And within a week, a month?
I mean, I don't know when the first capital improvement meeting might, it might, the meeting, first meeting might not be until the fall.
Probably tomorrow.
Probably won't be till the end of September or October of the meeting, but you could get it's one in before that.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's great.
Excellent.
Okay, administrative reports?
Okay. Okay, so the first thing I wanted to talk about is the middle high school administration plan. I know that there are many people who are feeling a little anxiety about it and I totally understand that. I, I don't dismiss that in any way. Mr. Gill, principal of the middle school, has announced that he's going to be beginning a new position in Haverhill in August, working as an assistant principal. I forget which school, but it's a, it's a middle, Whittier, that's right, and it's a middle school. So Peter and I, you know, have been talking, in fact, I talked to him today. He's at the, he's at the secondary school principals conference at the Cape this week, so that's why he's not here this evening. But I did talk with him at some length today and have been talking to him all along about this. So I know some of you are somewhat new to the committee and maybe didn't have children at, at the secondary level. So I'll just give you a little background as to how I think we got to where we are. When, when I first came here, Peter Lucio was the principal of the middle high school and had been for a number of years. Because this is Peter's 10th year in the district. And I've been here six full years, so he had been here for four years before I came and he was the middle high school principal. John Fochet, who was a gifted administrator, was the middle school assistant principal. Now, because John was who he was and P and Peter had, you know, a great relationship, John functioned in people's minds as the middle school principal. Even though he was never the middle school principal, he was always the middle school assistant principal. But he, he was, John was one of those people who was very content to work in Georgetown, had been here, I think, I think he was here seven, eight, nine years in that ballpark. And at that time, being a principal wasn't really his aspiration. So it worked out perfectly, you know, you got the best of both worlds, you got a great working relationship between Peter and John. The middle school had someone who was really well-versed in middle school education and loved it and, you know, it, it all was well. And then John decided he did wanna be a principal. So he left and went to North Reading as the principal of a standalone middle school. And has since retired from there, he stayed three years there and then retired. So when John left, we said, well, let's look at the model. And we decided that we would go out and search for another assistant principal. But in our heads, it was always, but we need to have somebody with the kind of leadership skills that can run the middle school. So we didn't really ever look for like a, a young person who maybe didn't have much administrative experience that was gonna grow in the role, that might stay for a while. We, we were really looking for somebody who could step in and run the middle school. Because that's the way the model had worked under John. Well, that's somewhat, it is somewhat predictable and I think Mike Gilbert kinda confirmed this, that whenever you have assistants, you know, generally if you have people who are really solid, a good solid administrators for assistant principals, that they usually have an aspiration to be a principal. So they don't often stay. As much as we'd like to say, you know, they're gonna stay for 10, 15 years, it's not really the norm with assistant principals that that is the case. So anyway, we hired Jeff Bruno. Jeff had previous experience, you know, running a, a little private, a little charter school. And Jeff was someone who was, you know, a, very capable and able to run the middle school. And he did run, he did do that effectively as an assistant principal for two years. But Jeff was recruited by Sogus, he was ready to be a principal. And, you know, the circumstances worked best for him and so he made the decision to go to Sogus. Again, he had his own middle school, you know, a true middle school all by itself, not sharing staff, not sharing space, you know, not sharing resources. And Jeff's still there and very, he's now moved to be the curriculum director there. So he's, he's had the opportunity to advance in that district as well. So then we hired Jennifer Turner. Again, very talented assistant principal. Jennifer was recruited by Lexington and she left because Lexington was closer to her home. She had a young family and she was making a significant amount more money. And she had her own school again. So I began, at that point, we, we took stock in that, we said, all right, let's take a look, what could be the problem here? And what might cause this, how can we reverse this? So we thought, well, what if we created a middle school principal? And then what we'd have is we'd have a high school principal, a middle school principal, and a dean of students that could help in both. Because that's how we could do it financially, because we didn't, we couldn't add a lot of money to this. We, we did this all through a redirection. We hired a woman who was an assistant principal who moved into the principalship, Mary Ellen Yana-Belly. Lovely woman, very skilled administrator. And after a year, Mary Ellen basically decided that it didn't work, that level of responsibility and time did not work for her family. And she moved, she took a job in Lynnfield as a department head and a teacher. So it proved to be that even, even having the role of a principal, it was very difficult in the situation, the way we've got it constructed for her to be truly the principal and not, and have enough resources, because she didn't have an assistant principal and at one point she didn't have a secretary. Because we redirected the money and we didn't have the, the amount of money to give to it. So then we, so when Mary Ellen left, when we hired Brian, we did find a little money to have a clerk typist. And we had Guy spend a little bit more time helping with discipline. But at the end of the day, Brian, Brian has decided to go to an assistant principal position because it fits better into his life and in his schedule at this point in time. And he also was anticipating, because he and I, and I believe in being honest with people. He and I have had conversations about what it looks like potentially down the road when we, we move to a seven and eight middle school and whether or not we feel we can justify as a district, a full principal salary for two grades, which is roughly, it's gonna be less than 250 kids, but it may be in the order of 215 kids. My expectation is that that's probably not the model we're gonna continue to pursue at that point because of the numbers and what the, what the budget will look like probably at that point in time. So I think anticipating that, you know, I don't blame him, you know, he has one year on his contract, but he certainly didn't wanna be up against, now I'm scrambling to get a job. So he, you know, put his feelers out there and apparently felt that this particular position that he's going to, at this point in time, was one that he wanted to accept. So obviously it's a challenge, but, but we have to make it into an opportunity. And the way I'm looking at it is, maybe the best thing to do is to try to figure out what we wanna do so that we're not making another change in two years. Which is why, so what I did, just for your benefit, kinda like talk, thinking, my thinking out loud with Peter, I just put it in your orange note. So you can see that there's a number of options that we've been sort of weighing. And, you know, obviously, you know, option one, which is a middle high school principal, going back to that model. Because I think the other thing, you know, we're, we're very concerned with, you know, why are the principals at the middle school leaving? But I think part of that is because we've set the model up that way. And we've, the people we've identified for the middle school have been people who have been ready to be principals or have decided that maybe they don't wanna be a principal, that, you know, it's hard to be a principal in a school where you don't have your own space. You don't have your own resources. Your schedule has to be jiving with the high school because you're sharing teachers. My perspective is that I think we're working too hard to say that we have two distinctly different schools. I think we need to look at it as, we have a six through 12 grade span, just like when we go to the elementary school. We're not looking at it as we have a primary school and intermediate school. We're saying we have a K through six school and we're gonna do what's appropriate for kids at their various developmental sequence. But we're still looking at it as a continuum. And I think that that's part of what we need to be doing now, is looking at it as six through 12 and then eventually a seven through 12 school. If we do that, then what we have to remember is Peter Lucio's been here 10 years. Peter Lucio's never left. The, so the principal or the leader of that middle high school's never left. He's been the one constant. But the assistants, you know, have left. And I, and I've now, in my mind, I'm not convinced anymore that putting a middle school principal there is the solution to the, to the, to the turnover problem. So option one that we were looking at is middle high school, you know, Peter being that principal and then having, you know, the assistant principal, Guy Prescott has gone through an education. He's getting his, his certification to be an assistant principal, so he can, he can actually move up from being a dean. He can now do things like evaluate, work on the schedule. So we'd have a high school assistant principal and we'd have a middle school, a principal, assistant principal, which would be TBD. Now, when we say assistant principal at those schools, we have to be clear to say that Peter's the principal. Peter's the one who runs the school. The assistant principal's jobs are to assist with the day-to-day operations of the school. So if there are issues that need to come up, come up, they would troubleshoot them first. They would, you know, help the staff with the things that don't require Peter's attention. But there should be no, there should be no confusion that the assistant principal is an assistant principal. That we're not looking at this as they are the principal of the school. But we do think, and Peter's done a little more research, like today, for example, when we were talking, he's at this conference I told you about. For some reason, they had a job-alike session with people like him that are middle high school principals. And so he said it was wonderful, because he said, took the opportunity to kinda pick everybody's brain about, so how do you do it? You have, if you have more than one assistant principal? And they all said that they felt it was essential to have somebody who was kind of targeted toward the middle school and somebody for the high school, just so that everybody feels that, you know, they have a voice and, and they're, the different developmental levels, you know, can be represented. But that, they all said, we're the principal of the school. So that's, that's one option. The next option, still middle high school principal, six through 12. And then a middle school associate principal and a high school assistant principal. The thinking there is that the associate principal would have a little bit higher elevation in terms of their, in the power structure. That they would, they would really be like we had when Jeff and Jennifer were there. They would be running the school, or like John Fochet was there. You know, the downside to that is we continue to perpetuate then, you know, one school gets, is, you know, needs its own, like administrator and we're not confident that the six through 12 principal model can work.
Carol, can I ask a question?
Of course.
So the associate principal
Yeah.
Is a higher level than the assistant.
That's right.
But yet, in the future model, the associate principal would be responsible for two grades.
Right.
But yet the assistant is responsible for four grades.
Right, and that's why I, I, that's, I'm not a fan, this, remember, this is the, this is the brainstorm. Yeah, but I think the thinking was that the middle school, people are feeling like the middle school is somehow gonna lose out in a, in a model where the principal is a middle high school and the high school, and he, and he's really focused, he, his mind is around the high school. Peter, Peter's a high school guy. Peter's not a middle school guy.
Yes.
Can you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to elaborate on your, can you give an example of a responsibility that an associate principal would have, that an assistant principal wouldn't?
Well, I think, I think the way we're looking at the assistant principals is the assistant principals, so if a parent had a question or something that happened, you know, they would, they would call the, the assistant, right, to just, you know, say what is on their mind. Oftentimes, the assistant would run it by the high school, the middle high school principal and, you know, they would come up with a solution. Or the associate principal, kinda the expectation is, is that you're the final authority, basically. You know, you go to Peter if you have to, but basically, you know, you have the authority to make any and all decisions that would, would happen for that school. You know, or like, when we talk about budgets for the middle high school, Peter's gonna represent that. The assistant principals aren't gonna represent that. If you had an associate principal, the expectation would be the associate principal would be the one who would be talking to you about what the needs of the middle school are.
I guess one of the things I was thinking about, and I don't know if you have this scenario here, I don't think so, is, I was thinking of it as sort of a stepping stone in someone's career path. So you come into the middle school and I'm thinking future.
Yep.
You know, when, when the changes are made, as an assistant principal. You get some, some knowledge, some experience under your belt, but you're an assistant principal.
That's right.
Then you have the career path to go to an associate, where now instead of having two grades, you now have four grades.
That's right.
And then to me, you're well-positioned for Peter's position down the road. So I sort of see, see another scenario with that flipped.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I think Peter and I are not, are not fans of that model right now, the way, the way it's structured. Because the other thing that we're gonna talk about is, I'm gonna suggest that the first thing we do is look in, in-house. And none of the people that I would look at in-house have really ever been assistant principals. And so I'm not sure that they're ready to just assume an associate principal role, anyway. So again, we threw it out there as something, I think initially Peter and I talked about it because I think Peter has been a little anxious about, like, what's it gonna look like for him, you know, and what support would he need? But in talking with it, talking with him more and more, you know, I think he is comfortable with two assistant principals. With the idea that, you know, again, like you said, that gives these people that we might look at in-house, if we select one of them that might be interested, then they have, they have the ability to get the experience. And then, like you said, we could, you can certainly look at, do we then make it an associate principal down the road? But right away, like tomorrow, right out of the gate for next year, he and I really have come away with, we don't suggest this model. You know, we, we are suggesting two assistant principals.
But so you're not thinking at a particular time necessarily, just if the person
She's just saying, she's just saying it could become a career path for somebody.
It could.
But you wouldn't see it as the person with two grades, you'd see it as a, as maybe a different configuration of grades.
Well, I guess you have to think about it today as, as three grades, because that's what they have.
That's right.
But I guess I, I'm still thinking about, the middle school is three grades, the high school is four grades. So there's still more work with oversight of four grades. So I guess I wonder if you even do two assistants, do you have sort of an issue?
I don't think they're looking at it as a, as a, an amount of work, you know. I, I, in that, and so I've been trying to encourage Peter to think of it less as everybody's in the boxes. To say, if I'm the middle high school principal and somebody says to me, you have two assistant principals, well, I, I wanna be able to use those people in the way that meets the school's needs the best. Right, so if I'm lucky enough to have somebody who's got a really solid academic background, I might have that person be working on projects that really work on the academics and have somebody else who might be better at assisting with discipline. You know, so I, I would wanna use my people, you know, creatively. But, and I think Peter will do that, but I think he's, he's feeling at this point in time that, you know, in whatever transition we're making, that there does need to be somebody who's going to be a point person for the day-to-day operations of the middle school. So the third option is
Carol, I'm sorry.
Of course.
For my own clarification, option two or that scenario really is kinda the way it is today. Is that fair to say?
You mean with, with Brian or with, or with like the John Fochet?
Brian as the associate principal today?
Well, no, Brian, Brian was the principal of the middle school. Now, what you're, now you're right, Peter did the schedule because it was impossible for them each to do their own schedules because they share staff and they share space and they share resources. But it's more like it was when John Fochet was here. Even though John was called an assistant principal, he really was the go-to guy for the middle school. You know? And then the third is middle high school, oh, sorry, the third, I'm sorry, the
The third.
Third is just, if we, if we thought about just doing what we're doing right now, Brian leaves, hire a full principal, you know, keep the current model. The disadvantage to that, I think, is, you know, you maybe, well, if we went in that direction, then we'd be saying to somebody in two years, if we decided not to keep the full principal for two grades,
Your job.
Your job is, is, is either gonna become an assistant principal, which I think is really hard to go from a principalship to an assistant principal.
That would be difficult.
That just seems very difficult to me. And, you know, we have to look at, you know, the long-term viability of whether or not, you know, for 220 kids, it does make sense to have a full principal, especially in a building that is not its own building. It'd be one thing if it was his own building.
Right.
Let's say we move the middle school seven and eight to Pearlie and they had the wing where the K and one are and they're their own school. Well, then that would make more sense. But when you have them in, you know, in the same, you know, especially
So many shared resources.
And now you're gonna have more, you're gonna have more, because on the third floor, with the, with the new scenario, when the sixth grade moves out, now you're gonna add high school classes up on the third floor, which, you know, really hasn't been the case in the past. So there's that model. I'm throwing it out there just so you know all the things we were talking about. And then the last one that we talked about is actually the one we like the best. But it's the middle high school principal, two assistant principals. And then for this two-year transition, given the fact also that the school's gonna be going through, getting ready for the NIASC, the next NIASC report, which is gonna be a huge amount of work for everyone. The thought was perhaps we just created for two years, the idea of a middle school department head. So for example, if we need to put together advisor-advisy, which we need to do, a middle school
That's a big
Department head would be a teacher, but they would have release time, some release time, and they get a stipend. Because now we have six through 12 content department heads for the core, for the core. So this would be a middle school department head, which would be responsible for like making sure that the team meetings were organized and that there was consistency in terms of, you know, the, the programs and services. It would be somebody who would be designated to the middle school around middle school matters, but wouldn't be running the day-to-day operation of the middle school. They would be focused on those things that were unique to middle school, that everybody's worried about what's gonna happen if we don't have a middle school principal. It could be a two-year position while there are three grades there, with the understanding that it probably, it probably won't exist or may not exist beyond that. Beyond that. Um, because you'll have the two grades, we may, we have, the thing we have to discuss next year as a group is, well. How much of, how much of the mid- when we have two grades, do we go with something that looks a little more like a junior high? Or do we, do we stay with a, you know, the middle school concept, you know, as it is? Because there are some features of the middle school right now that really aren't middle school. You know, there, there are things that we, because we're so small, we don't have the luxury of having different kinds of teams for different kind of learners. We don't really have as much interdisciplinary curriculum as you would expect in a larger middle school. We don't at this point have an advisor-advisee um, structure. You know, those are things that are sort of commonly considered middle school. We don't necessarily, the schedules are usually more flexible in a middle school, but because we share staff with the high school, we have a very. Much a schedule, it looks like a high school schedule, that rotates and drops and does all kinds of bizarre things. Um, so, th- that's just a thought now, and how we would do that is, obviously if we were looking for an internal. Candidate for an assistant principal, you know, they wouldn't be receiving br- the salary Brian receives. So there would be some, some wiggle room in there in terms of some funding that would allow us to. Give the middle school department head some comparable funding to what the current high school department heads get for a stipend. Plus, they would have one less teaching period, so we would have to figure out the teaching, the replacement of the teacher for that, for that period. And it would have to be negotiated with the union, because there isn't a position for this department head posi- there's a department head. Structure in the contract, but there's not a middle school department head identified. So I don't even know if the union would go for it. I'm, I'm not, you know, maybe there's nobody who would want it. I don't know. We're just looking at it as a potential structure. So, we, there, if we select that, there will be some work to do just to get it in place. But I'm interested in, tonight it would be awesome if we could determine, you know, if any of these models work. You know, like, for example, if we decided we're not gonna add a principal, we're gonna add an assistant principal. Then that's gonna allow us to go forward and advertise and, and, and try to get some candidates. Um, that might be interested. So in terms of a process, I, I suggested in the notes that. And Peter isn't true supporter of this, that we try to look in-house first. To the candidates that are either certified or are really, you know, like, have everything in place, it's just a matter of getting the, the information, you know. From the um, D E S E. Um, so we would let, we send a note out to all the staff saying, this is the decision we're making, we're hiring a. Let's say it's an assistant principal for the middle school. Um, Peter and I um, are, would do not, would not plan to have a search committee with a lot of parents and staff on it. If we were doing internal candidates. Because it's a little different than when you're doing, cause I, what I don't wanna do is put teachers in an uncomfortable position. Either the teachers who are being interviewed and the teachers who are on the interview committee. You know, if these are all their colleagues, it's very difficult when you, we'd be asked to be making a, a pick, you know. Um, but I think one thing that would be really great, when we put this email out, even when we put this email out to parents. Cause I do need to also let parents know that what we're gonna choose to do. Is to say, if you are interested in putting together some comments as to what you would like to see in terms of the qualities, what, what do you think we need? In the next assistant principal, so that when the group that's gonna interview them has the opportunity to, you know, they can have it in mind. Okay, this is what, you know, the, the, the teachers are hoping for, and this is what the parents are hoping for.
This is one of those items that kind of reminds me of the budget, where there's so much interest in it, but so little feedback that we get from.
Yeah.
Public, and so anything, I think that you can do to encourage feedback from them about that, this is, is great. Whether or not they respond.
Yeah, right, but I think, I, I'm trying to think of, well, what are, cause I, I also am not a fan of having people, you know, asking people for things that I. I really don't, we can't use, you know, or putting them through a process where at the end of the day, it doesn't, it's not satisfactory to everybody. So, you know, I think that there, certainly to ease some of the anxiety, there, there are teachers who will have opinions on. You know, wh- what kind of qualities or skills are they hoping for, what do they feel is necessary in the next person coming in? And the parents as well, like, what's important to them. Um, and then, we can, we can do these interviews and see who applies, do the interviews. If we're not satisfied that we have the right candidate in-house, then we'll advertise it. And we could still have somebody in place by the start of the school year.
Can, can you um, talk a little to? The, the idea that, so you have this temporary position for two years and.
The department head, yeah.
Yeah. What's, what's to ensure that the children for the next two years with the temporary department head? And then even the third year when that position becomes permanent, whatever it is, whoever it is. That those three years, that those children are going to receive, you know, the same quality of education. As um, the children who are in a s- in a series of grades where they have the same person at the top coordinating it all at the top.
Um, you mean, I'm, I'm, no, I, I, I'm not sure I follow you.
The question I had, I, I think, um, the department head, it sounds to me like, will be doing more like the team. Getting the team and stuff together, so it really wouldn't have anything to do with.
The kids as much.
Self.
No, the day-to-day operation of the school will be the assistants and Peter. The department head's role, although I wouldn't say the department head wouldn't assist with some things, it would be more like really helping to keep these middle school. Concepts, you know, going and somebody who would be working with the team, so like if they wanted to say. Um, how are we make, and they could work with the content department heads to make sure that the, the six through twelve, you know, curriculum is being. You know, it's a point person for, for middle school things and, and that person could, could re- report directly to Peter.
I, I do think it would be valuable.
Resource to Peter, I'm also trying to look at that too.
Sure, sure.
I do think it would be valuable, but my main concern is really letting the parents know.
Yeah.
That the middle school and the kids at the middle school are going to have their own leadership.
They're gonna have a middle high school principal.
But that's why I'm saying, I'm not so sure that I think that this department head is going to um. Do what I think the community needs to, to see happen with the middle high school. I.
Right.
Personally, I'm, I'm, I love the idea of going back to what it was before, which with Peter being six to twelve.
Yeah.
And then two assistant principals. Um, I guess I'd have to know a little bit more about what this department head would be doing.
Mm-hmm, well, we need to do the job description for sure on it, and again, we have to negotiate it, we'd have to do that for the negotiation with the union anyway. Though, I think you, you were on to what I was thinking, except the thing I, maybe I haven't been clear about, about is that. Peter's thinking with two, even if we have this department head.
Mm-hmm.
Peter's thinking with the two assistant principals is that he would still have one of those assistant principals be working. At the middle school, run, helping to run the day-to-day. So when I hear what you're saying about the parents, the parents would contact. Whoever it is, right? And then, what, if it's something that can be handled, you know, just with that person, then they'll handle it. Otherwise, you know, if it's something Peter needs to be involved in, they'll deal with it. So, the parents would still have a point person. They wouldn't necessarily be the dep- the depart- the department head would necessarily be the person.
Totally have that covered.
Okay.
You have.
That's more as a support for the staff and Peter.
Will have somebody, I, I, i- in these scenarios, I see that.
Yeah.
My thing is the um, is the department head, I, because like Rob was saying, how would that department head. And sh- you know, give the kids, almost, we're talking about the kids, but that department head wouldn't have anything to do with the children, is what I'm hearing.
Well, I, we have teams, we have middle school teams and all those teams have leaders, so.
You know.
Those leaders must meet together.
Yeah, they would, she wouldn't, they would interact with the teams and, and obviously still a teacher on the team, so there would be. There would be interaction with the kids all the time. It's that, that's not the contact the parent would necessarily get, unless. Peter said to whoever it is, would you do me a favor and contact this parent, the questions have come up about this particular thing? And I'd like you to explain what the teams are thinking about there. So.
We could go to the team leaders.
School, yeah, well, he could, but it's tough to go to the team leaders. The team, it's, it, the, what he's looking for is somebody that will bring the team leaders together, that they'll be a unified thing, and then there's one point person for him.
Okay.
Right.
That's what, that's what he's.
The purpose of this, Carol, to, the way I see it is, the purpose of this is to close the gap. When the middle school, I gotta get this down right, when the mi- when the uh, middle school assistant principal. Transitions from three grades to two grades, that's why it's a two-year position. Because you don't think the need exists once the, the structure changes.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So just to close the gap.
It is, it's, it's a sta- it's a, it's a stopgap thing, but it's also, because I know there's gonna be so much work with accreditation. You know, and, and a whole lot of work that's gonna be needing to be done with just getting the, the program scheduled, with the transition, with the sixth grade going out. With, that it would be useful, I think, to Peter, the staff, and, you know, the group as a whole to have a person. Like, I look at how Peter sees the department heads now, and those department heads, they get the MCAS data, they analyze the MCAS data. They work with their staffs on it, they figure out what the plans are, they meet as a group with Peter, they tell Peter how they're. Uh, there, there's nothing like that at the middle school right now.
Okay.
And I think that's what I'm look, that's what I think I'm looking for when I'm trying to think creatively about what is the need.
Perspective is very important here.
And I, I think there needs to be a transition for Peter to, to um, take this on and with. You know, with the workload that is coming up, with the accreditation that's coming up, um, he's gonna have a lot on his plate.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I, I think this, the, the department head is, is interesting, and I, I guess just in layman's terms, because I'm not an educator.
Mm-hmm.
So this is, in layman's terms, I, I think what is um, what is important. Is that the position that's created, um, that this turnover issue is one of the main goals. Of how we're redefining, if we redefine, how, how you're doing this.
That's right.
That's one really important goal.
Right.
And then the other goal, in just, you know, common terms, is that. The children, you know, you know how there was the blip in when the testing changed and the, 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 what was it for math? Where the MCAS, uh, it was one way of teaching and the scores.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
One grade had that, 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 that this scenario that's put in place, that for the next three years. You know, that those students aren't gonna pay some sort of price like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are the two basic.
Yeah, no, they, they wouldn't, because you'd still have, you, it's, it's actually offering and providing more support than the middle school than the just the assistant princ-. Two assistant principals provides. That's how I'm, that's how I'm seeing it. Um, and it also, it, you know, when you talk career paths, right, it also gives us. The opportunity to assist more than one staff member who might be interested in this, an opportunity to gain some valuable experience. That might help them in the next stage of their career too. You know, if they're interested in being assistant principal or principal going down the road.
Right.
They'd have some real leadership opportunities here.
Right. I- is there an opportunity when someone is an assistant principal and they're, and they're doing, you know, truly a superior job? That they get promoted to an associate?
We've never done that, Lorraine, we've never done that, but that's not a position we've ever had, but, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't do that. It just means that we just haven't done that.
I, I guess I just wondered if, if there's some positioning around that, that we're trying to sort of build experience within.
We are.
Right, so assistant principals will have the opportunity to go to an associate and then ultimately a principal. Like, does that help you with, with attrition?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it does, because most assistant principals, if you've had an assistant principal job and you've, you know, you, especially in a small school. Because you don't have a lot of people to do the work, you're, you're really involved in scheduling and, and student discipline and. Helping with curriculum alignment, now with teacher evaluation with the new system. I mean, that's the other thing is that it, we have to negotiate it with the union. But there might be um, some opportunity for this uh, uh, department head also to have some evaluative. Kind of responsibilities as well, which would help with the new system. Peter has a lot of people he has to do. And two new assistant principals that have never done evaluation before. So, you know, um, that, that's a, you know, those are all benefits. But we, you, most people, when they go to be a principal, they've had assistant principal experience for multiple years. They're pretty likely that they can walk into a, they don't have to be an associate in order to position themselves well for a principal shift going, going down the road.
What do you think are the criteria that would um, help find someone that's gonna stay?
Well, um, I think if we hire somebody from within that's never been an assistant principal. I think most people aren't, aren't assistant principals like Jeff and Jennifer, who already, you know, had a certain amount of experience. We hired them at that level because we wanted them to run the school. And they, you know, the people I think in-house who would be interested are people who have shown their um, longevity in the district already.
That's important.
You know, they've already been here multiple years, and I think have, probably would see themselves. You know, uh, if there were an opportunity here for them to grow, see themselves as, as staying here. I do think that has played into it in the past. That because we were expecting a different level of leadership, that we didn't feel we had anybody in-house that was necessarily ready to take that. Take that role of, of the hundred percent responsibility for everything at the middle school. We're changing our mindset a little bit and thinking, well, what if we, what if we gave an, uh, somebody who was looking to, to move into a more leadership position? But they haven't had that experience yet, they would probably stay here a number of years while they learned that, and maybe. You know, if they don't have aspirations to be a principal necessarily, because they can, they can play a, a role in a leadership team that they feel is high functioning. They wouldn't be as interested to go and look. So that's kind of what I'm thinking about in terms of, you know, if we have an assistant principal position. Then that's really where I think most people in our district that would qualify for this position would start. And I think would be happy to, to be part of a, an opportunity to grow. In both, a department head position, cause, cause either way, it would be moving from a teacher to. A position of some leadership.
If you can find someone in-house, that's just good business, just.
Mm-hmm, I, yeah, I totally.
And I'm confident that we, we will be able to.
Can, can I just ask, so, would, do, would you feel comfortable now speaking for Peter and saying that he would? Do you think he would prefer either scenario one or four, or, I mean.
He would prefer, cause I did ask this question.
Four or?
He would prefer.
What he.
He would prefer four.
Important.
He would prepare, he would, he would prefer four to start with, that's what he would be as number one. And then his number two would be one. Uh, he's moved away from the associate, he's moved, mine are, mine are the same, actually, mine are the same.
Okay.
And, and um, I do propose that we start with, uh, you know, qualified internal staff first. Uh, you know, get information out to the pu- to the, to the parents as well as the teachers, inviting applications for interested people. Um, and then, um, have probably Peter, Peter will probably have Peter Guy, he might pull Julie DeRoshin. Um, he's asking me if I wanna be involved in it, I, I may or may not choose to do that, uh, you know, I'm flattered to be asked. But, you know, I want this to be a, you know, I want this to be Peter's recommendation, and then, you know, I, I will certainly, um. I'm sure I will be able to support whatever his rec- I'm sure I'll be involved with the process as it goes on. Um, um.
Can we ask that you be part of the process?
Yes, you can ask that I be part of the process. He's asked that I be part of the process, and I'm very happy to be. I just wanna make sure that, because the law gives Peter the authority to make the choice. You know, but I also understand how difficult it would be for Peter, because whoever would apply are people that Peter has great respect for, has worked with for a long time. You know, I, I, I know it'd be very uncomfortable for him if it looked like it were just him. Um, but as he said, you know, um, sometimes it's an unpopular, you know, you're unpopular. But yes, I, I, I will be part of the process.
Yeah.
And if it, that's important to you, I, I, I will.
Completely respect Peter's opinion and, but I also respect.
Well, my, my goal here too is really to support Peter, to support the staff there, I, you know, I, I want this to work. And I think there's been some trepidation in the past, but I also have to tell you that Peter Lucia's a very different principal than he was, you know, five years ago. He's, he's gone through Nissel training, he's, you know, he's, he's done everything he can do to continue to learn and grow. Um, you know, he's learned a lot about the middle school, you know, he's taken the lead on this teacher evaluation and the technology component of it. You know, I, I told Peter I have faith in him, that he can do this, and I know he's one of those overachiever guys. That wants to make sure he can do it, you know, as we all are, but I told him, I, we're not, we're not, we're standing behind you, you can do this. Um, I have confidence in you and, um, you know, I, I think it, I think the parents and, and staff will relax a bit once. They see that, you know, some of the, the conditions that we're putting in place are really trying to do exactly what you said, Rob. Trying to stop the sort of steady flow out, you know, but I want people to understand that. You know, but I want people to understand that people aren't leaving because they're unhappy. They're just, it's not, they're leaving for professional changes and things that are, and, and those are things you can't stop.
The one thing that I would comment on is, you talked about the job description for this middle school department head. I think that's gonna be really critical.
It is.
For the parents to understand what this is and.
Yep.
They're not really necessarily the, sort of the face of the school to the children, but more in a supportive role. To the principal and to the assistants, so that they're not worried about when the transition.
Right.
Sort of position leads. But I think you really need to also redefine principal job description.
Yeah.
And the assistants, so that everyone else knows what they're signing up for.
I agree a hundred percent.
Very good, very good point.
Absolutely.
Um, does Guy ha- already have the certification?
I believe he does. I, I expedited it. He had all his things in and one of the things that you can do as a superintendent is you can request that, um. Once it's ready for review, you can request that, um, the DESE moves that person's file to the top of the list. And if they've met all the criteria, then they can become certified. So I believe that Guy has met all of those requirements.
I, I also, um, you know, respect Peter's recommendation as well as yours. I, the department head, um, I don't know, I, I. I'm not, I, personally, I don't see, um. It being, to me, something that, um, would. Make or break this whole situation. I think the assist- having an, an assistant principal for him at the high school level and then an assistant principal. At the middle school level, um. I wish I had talked to you earlier today about this because now all these questions are coming into my head. You know, as you're, as we're talking about what the department head will do, like the, the fact that the department head possibly would be a contact to parents.
No, only if it's determined that that's necessary.
Right. No, I know, but it would still be.
Well, yeah.
Something that, um, that individual would be asked to do, um.
Yep. Well, what I, what I need to know is that we're gonna, we're not replacing it from, with a high school principal, a middle school principal, that we're going with an assistant. That, that helps me to get that forward. And then, um, certainly the next step could be. Um, getting a job description together for, for not only that, but all of them. And then starting to talk with the union about the possibility, because I don't, I don't wanna wait till August and then start talking to the union about it. So, you know, if I had the authorization from the committee to, you know, at least take that to the next level, to just see what it could look like. Cause I, I can't guarantee that the union would agree to it. I don't know that we have anybody in-house who'd even want it, right? But I, I think it's, it's worth really, I think there's a value to it that we. And again, I'm saying it's a two-year position. If it, at the end of one year, it, it really has no value and no need, then I wouldn't see a need to continue with it. But I'm trying to respond to all of the anxiety and the, what I know needs to be done and what I think Peter needs and, and the staff needs. With two fairly new assistant principals in a new role and the need to continue to have middle school. You know, teams working together and, and, and there to be a cohesive, you know. Set up there with a point person who can really pull it together. That's what's missing there right now.
There's a comprehensive, consistent approach six through twelve.
Right.
But can I just ask, I'm sorry to ask another question, but, um, about the ad- advisor-advisee program.
Yeah.
Now, that is for the middle school and for the high school as well, is that right?
It, well, according to the standards for NEASK, no, no, according to the standards for NEASK, that has to be done. But see, that's an example of where Peter.
That's a big.
Peter, see, the, the assistant principals are running the day-to-day operations with Peter's input. But something like that, if you were doing advisor-advisee, you would, you, it would benefit to have somebody at the middle school whose job it was. Not running the day-to-day operations, but who could pull people together, could research advisor-advisee programs and then work in coordination with Peter. And whoever's gonna be working on the same thing at the high school to be able to pull something like that together. The person who's run, the person who's running the day-to-day operations of the middle school will not have time to really do that. And that's been our, that's been our problem. We have a gap.
And what about at the high schools? Does somebody who's gonna have time to do that at the high school?
I'm not sure how Peter's got that.
Could this person just kind of be in charge of that program in addition to, um, coordinating the teams at the middle school?
That, that.
Right, might not be an exclusive middle.
Wait, I don't wanna morph into something it's not, okay? Because it's, uh, they're teaching. That's, their, their primary job is their teaching, just like the department heads. Their primary job is their teachers. But they coordinate like the math curriculum. So like when the, when the information comes in for certain things, like at the sixth, seventh and eighth grade level. The de- the middle school department head could function as the person who pulls the team leaders together, works, looks at the data. Make sure that the assistant principal and Peter and, that are all on the same page. You know, I see it as somebody who's got some functions with some very specific tasks that right now don't get done.
So what percentage, cause this may help, what percentage of the department's head time? Would be put towards these additional tasks you're talking about as to pose, as opposed to teaching?
I think that the department has, no, 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 I, I think that's one of Peter's biggest issues has always is that he doesn't feel the department has, have enough time. To do, they, they get, they get, um, one additional period per day off to do department business. So they also have like, um, department time that they meet four out of seven days, I think it is. Uh, and then they have a personal planning time, which some of the department heads use for department business. But they get one additional period. So I think, well, this role would, but that's what the other department heads get too. They, they get one additional period beyond what every other teacher gets for.
Is that like ten percent?
Ah.
Oh, so it's.
Well, they have, they teach, every teacher teaches five periods a day and I believe the department heads teach four. So it's really not a huge, huge amount of time. That's why I said I don't wanna make it into a bigger thing than it is, but, but they all have te- they have team time. And the team time can be more effective if you've got a point person who's, you know, working directly with the middle high school principal. And the assistant principal to, to drive some of that, because we all know that there can be a discipline issue at the school, it'd take all day to solve it. And there's still a need to be doing all this other important work. Um, so that's why.
Twenty percent then, the, the way you described it, it's twenty percent. So I don't know if you feel differently about it, when you think about it like that, in terms of time.
Well, I, I think I'm hearing Barbie talk about, well, the, the confusion around the interfacing with families or parents. And, and again, I, I think it depends on the in- individual circumstance. I think the, the people the parents are gonna be dealing with the most. Are gonna be the assistant principal and the principal. That there may be, um, stuff that comes out from like a middle school department head that goes out to parents saying. This is what we're planning, this new event, we're gonna be doing this. Uh, that might come from the middle school, uh, department head. You know, but I don't anticipate that being, the department head being the point person for the parents. That's, that's not how we're envisioning it. It's.
Is the confusion though that we're calling it a department head when it really isn't a department head?
Well, it is a department head.
It is?
Mm-hmm.
Of what department?
Of, uh, basically, basically of the middle school.
Of all the departments?
Yeah. Well, you have, here's where it's confusing. You have si- you have six through twelve department heads for content in the four major subjects.
Content.
Okay? The six, the sixth, seventh and eighth grade always feel like the, it's difficult for the, cause you, remember, they only have one period a day. So they don't, they don't feel always like they're, they're being given it the same amount of attention in terms of curriculum alignment. That the high school are. So this, this person would help be, help pull those. I'm seeing it as trying to pull those little ends together, so that, as I said, with the three grades. And then we can revisit whether or not there's any value to it in, in three years. Or two years when the school opens or not.
But it's all related to curriculum.
Really, curriculum, team, you know, team stuff, you know, so, this would be somebody who, if we do Camp Kiev. Would really make sure, cause we're always concerned about Camp Kiev, you know, being per- permeating the culture of the school. Well, this person's job would be to make sure that what, you know, that if we're gonna be doing something like that, that it's well planned, that it's organized and coordinated. Right now, it's not coordinated very well.
But it is at the high school level.
Camp Kiev doesn't happen at.
No, 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 I just mean these other activities.
Well, it's there, yeah, it's, cause it's different. It, it's, it's, it's a different structure. And that's part of what I'm also trying to respect here, is that the middle school has a different, it has a different culture and a different structure. And I, I know that the, the person who's been the assistant principal at the middle school has often felt, you know, that. There's just, there's more to do than there's time to do. And we all know, all it takes is one or two things that happen during the day, that you're, you know, dealing with, that you, everything else kinda goes by the wayside. So I'm just trying to fill a, a, a need that I think there is in a short term. And capitalize on using people within our school that probably have the ability and the interest. Uh, to, to step up and, and play a role. But again, this is a first blush at it, right? There's a lot of discussion that can happen in terms of job description and how it can work. And again, Peter's, you know, not here and, um, you know, I'd like to hear other people's thoughts on it as well, you know, as to whether or not it. But it, but if the school committee doesn't have an aversion to letting me go forward with seeing what it can look like, then that helps me.
Well, can, I thi- can, I think what I wanna ask the committee members is that you, is everyone in agreement that we don't want another principal?
Yeah.
For middle school?
Yes.
I am in agreement.
We had a very constructive, good discussion and that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that helps, cause we can, we can, that, that's a huge step. Um, and are you also in support of looking in-house first? And then, you know, going out if we don't feel we have a qualified in-house person?
Yeah, I think, I think that.
Okay, and then are you okay with me proceeding with a discussion with Peter and maybe, maybe his, maybe Guy and a few other people? And the union in just looking at this concept of a department head? You know, and seeing, you know, I'll, I'll come back obviously with all the information on it and, and all of that, but, um.
I mean, it's already August.
I know.
Yeah, but as far as the department head, like going, going ahead and asking the union what their take is on it. Um, can it, can we put in here that that would, like not to say, yes, that's how it's going to go? Like, you know, that it doesn't, that that's not how, you know, it's not.
We haven't made a determination that we wanna go that route, but we wanna run it past you.
That you can.
Well, at the, it's not gonna be, it wouldn't be me that would negotiate that. That, it would be the school committee with that. So what my job would be is to work on the, you know, on the information. And then it would have to come back at, to the, to the negotiating subcommittee anyway. Because it's a new, it's, it would be, uh, obviously you, you, any of those things that win the contract. Get negotiated through you. I'm just your advisor.
I think what I heard you saying was that, that, that this is what you're trying to do is to get the ball rolling.
Yes, I am, I am.
Knowing that we don't meet until August.
And that there's still, there's still an opportunity for, for, for people who have concerns to, to. Those concerns can still be heard and responded to if, if the ball isn't hitting for the hole and you can't go to a different hole.
That's true.
Okay. Does that?
Yeah. Go with that ball.
Okay. Well, so, yes, it does. So, um, I'm wondering if, if you should take a, make a motion or take a vote. To, um, hire, um, an assistant principal for the middle school. So that, that, yeah, I think that that's, I, I don't think I made a.
So we don't have to change anything as far as the, um, guy's position now, like the, the, would we say two assistant principals?
Yeah, maybe you can say that the, you'd make a motion that, to approve a structure at the middle school, I mean, at the middle high school for. One assistant, I mean, one middle high school principal and two assistant principals and that, that would be fine.
Okay. So the chair would, will, will entertain a motion to, um, approve the model of. One principal for the Georgetown Middle High School and with two assistant principals.
Right.
So moved. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the dialogue and discussion on it. Okay, welcome. Um, and the next thing is at the retreat we did, um, I was asked to take a look at the. Uh, booklet that Mike Gilbert had given us and he had said in the back, there was a, a draft process. Um, that they were suggesting, you know, just a, more of a template than anything else. I don't have a problem with it, so Laura kindly just kinda reformatted it a little bit. So, um, if you're fine with that tool, you know, I think we should, because this is all new for all of us, right? So we can at least go through it for the first year. And if we then feel it needs to be tweaked or changed or, um, revamped, we certainly can do that. But I think to get the ball rolling, you know, using that form is fine with me.
Okay.
We need to add the one standard of miscellaneous.
There'll be no miscellaneous, Rob. It's gonna be busy doing what we're doing here. But, but if, if, if you're interested, if you're fine on that, then I'm fine on that. And then the other thing I wanted to say on this, um, on this matter is, um, I, I told you I did go to the, uh, superintendent's conference. On Wednesday and Thursday last week at the Cape. I don't generally go to that conference, but, um, because I'm now the, um. President of the North Shore Roundtable, I had to run a meeting. And, uh, it was a meeting of, you know, what the plans are for the year for the, for the roundtable, which is the superintendents and assistant superintendents in this region. And, um, but it, it was, it was worth my time. The, the whole theme of the institute was the new evaluation system. So, you know, they had, uh, people from DESE making presentations. There were a lot of race to the top districts. Who have been through the process for a year that, um, you know, offered, um, breakout sessions. So you could go and you could hear, you know, how that was going for them, lessons learned, things that, um, had worked really well. In fact, uh, Kristin Rodriguez, uh, did one of the sessions, uh, as you know, she's assistant superintendent in Chelmsford. She was our curriculum director here for three years. They were a race to the top district. So Kristin had, you know, gone through this process and done some really nice work in, in Chelmsford. So it was great to, to see her and hear, you know, what their experiences have been. Um, but one of the things that I, that I kind of consistently heard and it was something that I was thinking about. Was that, um, in this first year, because it is a new process for everyone. Um, that there be, um, a subcommittee of, in this case, it'd be two people, because we can't have a bigger subcommittee than that. A subcommittee of two people and what, it would just be like a, uh, like an ad hoc kinda committee, cause it's not one of your standing committees. But it would be a committee that would meet with me several times and we'd kinda go through draft goals and, um. Try to, you know, identify evidence that we would agree would be, uh, a good indication of if those goals were being met. And help just put together a timeline for when we would do mid-year reviews and. And it would just be, you know, a group that would meet with me and we'd go through the process. And then, of course, it would keep coming back to the, you'd have the mid-cycle report. We'd come to the full committee, but it would be, you know, a, a sort of a, a, a support function, I guess. Um, for both, for both of us. Um, so I'm, I'm asking if you'd consider that? And if you would consider that, if there might be two people who might be interested in that. Um, and it could be the negotiating subcommittee if you wanted to do that instead of set up another one. Or it could be two interested people who think that they'd like to be part of that process. And I'm fine with it either way. Um, so I don't know your thoughts on that.
You guys think?
Do you feel it falls with the negotiations?
Um, uh, you know, yes and no. I mean, I don't think it definitely falls there. You know, I'm just thinking if you didn't wanna add another group of the groups you have, that would be the group that's the closest alignment. But if, but if there are two people who are just very interested in it and have the time. You know, I, I would not think it would take a ton of time. But I think, you know, it would be nice to have some, a couple of people that would, you know, you could. Run the gr- goals back and forth and, you know, talk about what the evidence might look like. I think it's a more efficient than trying to do it all in a, in a big group.
But it would have, they would have to meet, um, this month, well, before the next.
Yeah, 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 yep, yep.
Before the next August school committee meeting.
So, just a, just a thought.
I would be happy to be on such a committee.
What, what, um. So there seems to be, um, uh, a, a culture that, uh, the subcommittee or, or an understanding. That these subcommittees that we form, um, do the guts of the work and then bring it back to the committee. That will sort of hear it one time, maybe ask a few questions, but. You co- you, you go with the subcommittee's recommendations. Um, i- is this the same kind of scenario?
I don't think it has to be, Rob, because ob- obviously the whole, and that, that was a question that came up at the, at these little breakout sessions. Um, because, you know, obviously the, the full committee needs to be kept in the loop, right? So it, it can't just be two people who, you know, really know it all and then all of a sudden, you know, it gets sprung on the whole committee. And the whole committee is expected to, you know, make decisions on it. Um, it's, this is more, um, this, the big committee would still, could be involved as much as it wants to be. Can be getting, you know, regular reports on, you know, how we're going toward, how, what progress is being made toward the goals on an ongoing basis. But this is just a. But this is just a group of people who just meets more, just the give and take, like suggestions and thoughts and what works as a liaison to between the, the small group and the big group. I think it's a little different than what you're, I think what you're saying is, you know, I, I don't want to be left out of the loop or just have somebody come and present it to me once and.
Exactly.
Right, but it would be like, let's say we, let's say we met a few times and we came up with the goals, SMART goals. And then we came up with a list of evidence. Well, that would then come back to the full committee and the full committee would have a chance to look at that and say, oh, okay, well, here's, you know, this occurs to me that this might be evidence I might look for or, you know what I mean? But I think if we want it to be a, a real process as opposed to just something that's a check the box. Okay, you know, you gotta hit this deadline, this deadline, and you come in with this binder of evidence, Carol, that we can't possibly look at and really decipher and understand. So I think it's, it's trying, what, the other thing they emphasize is keep the process reasonable. You know, don't come in with five binders of every memo you ever put together to support, you know, that particular. It's really the spirit of what, what's enough evidence so that the committee feels confident that, 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 that those standards and goals are, are being met.
So really this subcommittee, well, I don't know if it would exactly be a subcommittee, it would be an ad hoc committee, would, would kind of guide you toward putting together the, the evidence.
Yeah.
To present to the committee.
And then you, you know, you, you could report, you could report like at your regular meetings, you know how Barbie goes through and says, okay, you know, the building committee, the, you know, that, that person could say, well, we've met three times, this is what we've been thinking about. This is what we'd like your thoughts on, you know? And as I said, i- if it feels extemp- extempore, is that extemporary, then we won't continue with it. But I, I think to just get the process started, it might, you know.
What you just said there, uh, helps me a lot where, you know, if, if it's not working, if, if.
Yeah.
Everyone on the committee doesn't feel like they are up to speed.
Yeah.
And they're finding a hard time getting up to speed because of how important it is, that then we can come up with a different system.
Absolutely.
I, I mean, I, I volunteered if this, if this committee as a whole is comfortable with creating such a committee. I mean, you know, some committees meet more often than others and I don't know, maybe the negotiation, I'm not on the negotiations committee. If it doesn't meet all that often, maybe the negotiations committee would like to take that on, which would be fine with me also. I mean, feel comfortable with that?
Well, between, uh, Lorraine and I.
Okay.
I just don't know if I could get together before the, um, next meeting. I know that that's important.
And they're doing the negotiation on the contract, you know, so they, they have something on their plate. Plus you've got to do the, we have to do the negotiations with the two unions that we, which will start in October.
Right, so do you feel that your plate is, is full? I mean, how do you feel about?
Right now, between now and August, yeah.
Uh, but like going forth in the year, is that?
Well, it could change, but it, but it, but I think just we need, you would need to meet before that, the August meeting. Yeah, and I don't, I didn't get the impression that people met all the time. I mean, this is not, it, it just was a way to, um, just help the process move forward, give feedback back and forth and then be a liaison to the full committee, that's really what it was.
Would, would it make sense to have on this, if we had such an ad hoc committee, somebody, one of you from the negotiations committee? Or wouldn't it make any difference?
It wouldn't make a difference. Because like you had said, it almost like, out of any of the committees, negotiations is the closest it would fall into, but it doesn't.
Have to, yeah.
So, is anyone else interested with Pam?
I mean, I don't know if Alana's interested, you know, I mean, I think she might be, she seemed really interested in the process. But I obviously can't commit, obviously for her if she's not here.
It's not that I'm not interested, but I'm.
It's the time.
It's the time.
Yeah.
Well, all right.
Well, why don't, I mean, I.
Going August ninth through the sixteenth, or otherwise I'm available.
I mean, I, I mean, I could try, I, I could speak to Pam about it and maybe we could approach Alana, see if that's interesting to her. And, you know.
Or even if you and Pam did talk and then you could, you could, I would be a part of it, just I probably wouldn't be able to.
Okay.
Meet with you guys and maybe she could.
Well, that, let's try that then.
I could do that. And then beyond August, I could certainly make the time to do it.
Okay, well, let's try that then.
Commit to something now that I can.
Okay.
So do you want to do that?
Sure.
Okay, so, so we, we talked about having a motion to approve the template. If you, if you're in agreement, that it's fine, I'm, I'm in agreement. And then maybe we could have a motion to just appoint you, the two of you.
Yeah, okay, great. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve the evaluation template as presented by the superintendent for use in 2013, 2014.
So moved.
Second, any questions, discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
To, um, the chair will entertain a motion to appoint Pam Lundquist and Barbie Lenaris to the superintendent's evaluation subcommittee for 2013, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That'll be good.
Excellent, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, and then finally, the last thing on my agenda is the opening of school survey results. I thought you might be interested. Um, yeah, I, Barry Belandor, thanks to him, he put up our little one-question survey, uh, and I just gave you the statistics. So four hundred and sixty-six, um, no, sorry, six hundred and sixty-two responses were received. Uh, four sixty-six or seventy percent of those were to start before Labor Day. And thirty percent or one hundred and ninety-six votes were to begin after Labor Day. Now, of course, you know, we have received a few inquiries, you know, could you change this year for this coming year? Because we are predicted to get out late again and we're just gonna keep our fingers crossed for a, for a, um, light winter. I know Joe Patella had expressed some interest, you know, in, uh, from the union's perspective on, you know, kind of getting in the habit of starting before Labor Day. Um, I, you know, I, you know, obviously you can revisit it again, but we, we already had somebody come before us and we said, no. Uh, you know, I think that the best thing to do honestly is to use these results in the future.
Yes.
Um, you know, uh, so if we kind of stick with the case, I, I know for a fact, I've had a few people tell me that they made vacation plans for, for the end of August now because of knowing they're gonna go after Labor Day. So I, I just worry that if we change our mind now, that, you know, it just may create some angst for you that we really, it's, we really.
I'm very sympathetic.
Yeah, I'm.
And I understand some of the, you know, ideas and thoughts behind asking for a, a change. But I think the time to approach the calendar is in February and March.
Yeah, well, I would agree with that as well. Um, but I, I do think that that it's interesting. Uh, not surprising to me, but I think it is interesting.
How did, um, how was the question issued?
It, it said, it, well, it was up on our website and, um.
Okay.
Yeah, it just said.
And I, and I sent a connect ed message saying, you know, it was just one question. It just basically said, would you prefer to start before or after Labor Day and get out or, or before Labor Day and get out earlier in June?
So to find the question, you had to be an individual that was usually going on the website?
No, well, I, I put, I put a connect ed message out. So I said, you know, this is, if you'd like to weigh in, here it is.
Great.
Yeah, no, I, I wouldn't rely just on that.
Don't you think most of our, our parents go to the website every day?
I'd like to believe it, but I know, I know people are busy and they don't necessarily. So anyway, that's for your information.
Thank you for that.
I just wanted to double back so you, and thanks again to Barry for, uh, presenting, you know, I asked, Laura called him and said, you know, Carol's wondering if there's any kind of way you could represent the results. And so he created this nice little graphic page here so you could see how, how it, how it, uh, all came out. All right, so that's, oh, staffing. Um, so in your packet, you have a template. And it just shows you, um, which positions were still in the process of hiring and the people that we, we've hired for the positions that have been open.
And are we, does it look like all these will be filled?
All of them, I, or I, I believe all of them will be filled. It's just, uh, the principals are all very involved right now in, um, in the process of, uh, finalizing, uh, new hires and checking references. So, yes, actually, there's very few positions open for this, at this point in the summer. So I'm, I'm confident that we'll, and, and I meet all of the new teachers before, because I'm the one who negotiates the salary and, and these of them. And I've been very impressed with the folks that I've had the good pleasure to meet.
We have a Mandarin teacher.
We do have a Mandarin teacher, but she has decided, she's a native Mandarin speaker. It's, that's the position that's the hardest, Peter's really struggling to.
That was, that was a rare opportunity to have that in, in a public school, it was highly unusual.
Well, actually, a lot of places are adding, have added Mandarin. But the, but she, part of, part of, because she was a native speaker, it gave, we hired her initially as math teacher. And it gave us the opportunity to, to utilize her to teach Mandarin. And she's just leaving the profession right now. She's experi, you know, looking to see what else might be interesting to her. And, um, uh, I had a chance to speak with her, you know, when she told me that she was, she was going to be moving on. And, and, uh, that is a position Peter has been, um, you know, he's continually getting, um, applications, but it's been hard, that's a hard one for him to fill.
So what will happen if he doesn't fill that, like say?
Well, he'll have, we'll have to, we'll have to fill it, um, uh, you know.
I mean, would it be a possibility of, well, I know you'd have to come before the county.
Sometimes you can go to other outside groups. Um, probably, probably not because what, we, I'd have to talk with him about that, but we probably wouldn't add a different language because most colleges require two years of a language. So you, you wouldn't want to just drop a language in there because you wouldn't be able, it wouldn't really help the kids, you know, in college. Because they want two years of the same language. But sometimes what happens is you can find, uh, schools where they have Mandarin programs and, and they can, they send you someone on a, on a contract basis as opposed to someone that, you know, wants a job within your system, you know, working under your, your, uh, contract. Uh, we did try that once, it really wasn't as successful as we would have liked. So, you know, we, we're not sure that's the way we'd want to go, but we can't dismiss it as an option.
Right, at least we have an option.
We've got to look at, yeah, we've got to look at that. But, but I, I will periodically be bringing this kind of information to you so you can see where we are in our hiring process.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions about the superintendent's information for the committee? I love looking at the newsletters.
I know, they're great.
No questions on that? Okay. And financial report?
Yeah.
Joan, you want to handle that one?
I did bring with me, even though it didn't get into the packets, um, you know.
Yeah.
They all need a copy.
Well, the budget and finance subcommittee met, so this is.
This is the final budget report for FY thirteen. So you'll see there are no negatives in there.
We told you it was gonna be all zeros and it is.
I will, uh, comment that we did, at the end of the day, we were still, forty-eight thousand dollars in the negative. And so we transferred, that was tuitions that over and above the two fifty, over and above, uh, other money that we had already put for tuitions, um, that we had to put the circuit breaker. So we ended up charging circuit breaker a total of two hundred and eighty-three thousand this year.
It's no surprise, but it's interesting how like months ago, we thought we would be fine, like at the zero and not, you know, and then you have to go and hit another account for forty-eight thousand.
And, and we have, uh, a couple of situations, students that, um, have either just moved to Georgetown or are, are, uh, in, in, in schools, not in our public schools, but their families reside in Georgetown. That we are responsible for providing services for. And there are a couple of pretty significant, um, potential, um, uh, scenarios that, you know, we may, we may, um, we're trying to create our own in-house options. But, um, we're in the process of discussing, um, those options with families and we're not sure how it's all gonna end up. So it, it may be that there are costs that again, we, we can't have anticipated.
Right, uh, it just goes to show again.
That we start the year dealing with.
You can't forecast these things, it just can pop up at any time.
Joan, was, so was that in addition to, um, the two, the, the substitutes and the special ed? Was that, that was in addition to those?
That was the bottom line, at the end of, at the end of the budget, we were in the, the, you know, the red, forty-eight thousand dollars. We were in the red in different lines. We had to move money around all year to take care of those. You'd approve those transfers, that was, you know, like eighteen pages, the last meeting, whatever. Um, substitute was, the long-term substitute, um, line was, I believe, in the nineties. And, um, we had a lot of extended illness, we had a couple of long-term attorney leaves. Um, so we did budget, we did increase, we look back at the FY fourteen budget and we did increase it, I think I said, to thirty thousand. Because history had shown we never just spend twenty, that's what we were budgeting.
Well, when you hire young teachers, you know, that you kind of expect that they're going to start a family and so.
Um, but, you know, again, I, I just did a little calculation here during the meeting. We spent over one point three million dollars just on tuition and special ed transportation this year. And when we budgeted next year's, we had a high-cost student turn, aging out at twenty-two that we were able to reduce the budget by, but already we're feeling like that, you know, we did, we budgeted what was real, what we knew. We budgeted a percentage increase that was, you know, standard. It, we're already worried, it's very scary.
One of the things we did talk about at the budget and finance, because, you know, sometimes the, the public may have questions about, you know, well, when you say you move money, like, how does that happen that you move money? It's not like money that we find. But one of the things, like, good example that Joan gave, I think, the other day was, like, for example, we had budgeted a certain amount of money in our legal line. We didn't end up needing to spend the money in the legal line. So that's money that could have been, been made available to o- offset some cost in special education, uh, toward the bottom line. Well, but there was one other that you suggested that it made sense, that it was just money that we just didn't spend.
We, we budget, uh, contractually, we budget for tuition reimbursements for the teachers. You know, we have, we can control what the, what the amount is, basically, based upon the contract and what each ti- teacher is entitled to. But if teachers don't take more courses, you, we really can't touch that money because they could come in at any time and say, I need my reimbursement.
That's an agreement we made with them.
So, you know, that's in the contract. So, you know, we had money left in that line. And if you go through the budget, you know, the, the budget I just gave out, it shows you the original, um, budgeted amount. Now, I moved a lot of accounts around when I first started. As you can see, nothing was budgeted in special ed and I moved all the money to the district special eds. But you can look through, you can find that long-term sub-line and see, originally budgeted, I think it was like twenty-four, twenty or whatever. And that, at the end of the day, that, we had to transfer money from all different pools. We also implemented a budget freeze. So principals didn't get to spend their money this year. You know, middle school textbooks. I think, I think that we ended up having to take maybe seventeen or eighteen thousand.
Yeah, seventeen thousand, yeah.
From that, so, you know, it's unfortunate, but we were right, we were gonna be over, but we were.
Yeah, we, we can't end the year in a negative balance. So we, we do have to, and thankfully the town helped us with those extraordinary expenses. And that they accommodated for those in this year's budget.
The two fifty.
The two fifty, that was, that was, that was very, very huge.
Huge, huge, because I'm not sure, I mean, the only option you have when your budget is all mostly salaries and, uh, well, not even benefits here, mostly salaries, is, it's by the time you know you're in trouble with special ed move-ins or, you know, out of district placements, you have to lay off a lot of people to get any significant money.
Right, because if you, if you're short, yeah, if you're half, if you're halfway through the year.
You don't have.
You don't have the full amount, you have half the amount, so you can double the people.
We don't have a lot of, of money that's discretionary.
No.
You know, we don't have, we don't have the utilities in our budget anymore.
Speaking to that, just for the public, what, what is the percentage that goes to salaries roughly?
I thought it was eighty-two percent.
Eighty-two percent.
Something percent, so I mean, that tells, that, that gives you, that's a big.
Yeah, and try to keep the increases every year, you know, to that two and a half percent in terms of salaries and, um, uh, non-salary items, which is what we did this year. Special ed is the difference.
And if you think of what I just said, we, one point three million, um, of special ed, just tuition, transportation, not special ed teachers and all that stuff, one point three million, and our budget's only twelve million. I mean, look at that percentage, so pretty soon, what's left? You've got about three percent or four percent left after all the, you know, we have contractual commitments, I mean, this.
I mean, the good news is we've, we've never had to lay off people mid-year. We've never had to end the year, you know, on the wrong side, you know? And this year we would have if the town hadn't given us that money, there's no doubt in my mind, we would have been making. Yeah, but I, you know, and I really appreciate the, the finance committee and the Boris Leckman and others that, you know, really did try hard to listen and understand. And I think obviously, you know, we've tried to have that kind of partnership where people trust, you know, the numbers. And we're happy to explain exactly where, you know, every dollar comes from, you know, aside from disclosing any private information that we're not allowed to disclose. But, um, you know, thankfully, you know, we, we've worked hard to form that relationship.
Well, I think explaining it too, because in the beginning, I was at a lot of those meetings where the finance committee, I don't think understood, what do you mean, you can't tell us?
Yes.
How much? And they were great in taking the time to let us explain to them. Why we don't know, you know, because money, numbers people always, you have to have a number. But with that, you don't have a number, because anything could change, it's such a volatile account.
Right, and, and we, and we do budget the actuals. A lot of districts, what they'll do is they'll say, well, we know, we anticipate there may be a, to, you know, a, a placement or two. So we're just gonna put that in a, in our budget and a. there may be a, you know, a placement or two, so we're just going to put that in a, in our budget and a contingency in our special ed lines. But then when you do that, then there's something else you can't do, right? So then your, your increase either has to go up or you have to put fewer things in your budget. And as Joan said, when you have very few things that are not salary, you know, then you're cutting supplies and, you know, essential, um, things for teaching and learning and that can't happen either. So, so, you know, we, we're, we always know that we have an austere budget, which I know sometimes the public doesn't, you know, understand all the nuances of it. And it is a complex, it is a complex process. But, um, you know, we, we tried really hard this year. And, and again, the principals didn't get to do certain things that they had planned to do. But, but we did end up on the right side of it at the end of the day.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Yes.
So that's that. And then one other action item.
And I guess I want to say, and that's good news.
That's very good news. I agree with you, Rob. I agree. I agree. Um, so do you want to speak about the school choice request?
Um, we, every classroom, or I believe every classroom has, um, area rugs at the Pembroke School in them. And, um, when the custodians started to clean up, uh, at the end of the school year, they moved the rugs out. A lot of them are just really, um, so worn. They were all donated rugs. Either teachers brought them in themselves or purchased them themselves or PTA or parents or whatever. But, um, and Mike Anderson was called over there because the custodian wanted to throw out a couple of the rugs and he wanted permission. And then when Mike went over there, they started having conversation and none of the rugs meet the fire retardant requirement by the fire department. So, um, you know, although we don't want to spend the money, because in two years we'll be having a new school, um, it's really important. I'm not an educator, so I don't know. Everyone told me it's really important that they have the area rugs. I think they have reading time and stuff on the rugs.
They start their morning off, right?
So, um, we've, we got a great price on replacing every area rug at the Pembroke School. Less than two hundred dollars. They'll be code compliant. Um, however, I, I don't really have a funding source unless I was to ask Donna to come up with that of her school budget, which she doesn't have a lot of money in. So, uh, we currently are carrying over in school choice, a little over a hundred thousand dollars. So my suggestion was that we take it from school choice.
And it was under five thousand dollars?
Correct.
Yeah, forty-four eighty. I think you made the right choice.
I don't think the, I don't think the existing, um, rugs, for example, also, regardless of how dirty they were, I, they aren't co- code compliant.
They're not. It's a safety issue.
So it's either you buy them or, I mean, you have to throw them away.
Right. We were throwing them away. And then the question was, do we go two years without the rugs? You know.
Well, the finance and budget committee recommended that we do as you suggest.
We took that, yeah.
As a recommendation to the committee.
We took that vote.
Okay, good. Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to use four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars from the school choice account to cover the cost of replacing the Pembroke rugs as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion stands. Great. Okay, um, so let's see, where are we?
Subcommittee reports.
Subcommittee reports? So budget and finance?
Well, you, you kind of already just touched on it all.
We did. We went through it, yeah.
I, I'd just say that, so we did meet, uh, we met Tuesday, uh, July twenty-third. We went over the end of the year FY thirteen report, as Joan just talked about. And we talked about, uh, the revolving accounts on the agenda and the area rugs, which, which were, which were just, uh, talked about. And, um, the, Carol had expressed the concern with, um, the budget coming up for fourteen. And, um, we talked about that. And if anybody had any questions, now's the time to ask Carol about that. But, uh, we did not do number four on the agenda, which was to schedule.
That's right. Schedule what?
Schedule the next meeting.
Oh.
We need to put that first on every agenda.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I just add to that, that I did want to, um, report that we ended the year in the athletic revolving account with, um, fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Oh, that's good.
And with food services, uh, sixteen thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. So that's very good.
Thanks.
Oh, and you know what? While we're there, and I should have put this on mine, is I just wanted to formally, um, recognize Diane Halipowski, who is our food service director. Diane has, is, has resigned her position and, um, is, uh, looking at other, other options in her career. And, um, you know, I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank her for her years of service. Diane started as the bookkeeper, uh, in the food service department and, under the previous director and then moved into the director, has done that work for a number of years. And, um, you know, anytime anybody leaves after a long time, I think they deserve our thanks and our appreciation for, you know, all that they've done and contributions that they've made. So I do want to publicly thank Diane for her service. Go ahead, we wish her the best.
Do you know how many years she's been with us?
Oh my, um, I should know that. Um, you know, I know she was the director when I came, so she's been the director of more than six years.
Yeah.
I think maybe she was the director a couple of years before.
Fifteen or sixteen.
As the director?
No, as the, she was the director one year before you came.
Okay.
One or two years. And the rest of the time she was the bookkeeper.
Yes, so she's been probably here fifteen years and she was a director for, for seven or eight. So, you know, that's a long-term commitment and, uh, you know, it deserves our, our.
She served up a lot of great meals in that time.
Served a lot of students, a lot of food. That's right.
Well, we wish her the best.
Yes, we do.
Okay, governance, Alana's not here. Um, negotiating, um, Lauren and I met tonight before the, um, before the meeting. Um, and we'll talk more about that during executive session. Um, public relations?
Uh, we have not met since our last school committee meeting. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, August sixth at ten-thirty. In Pearlie.
And what about safety?
Safety, we've not met, not since last meeting.
And on school building committee?
We have, uh, next meeting is coming up this, uh, next Tuesday, July thirtieth. Um, just a recap on the overall schedule. So the hundred percent documents are, a hundred percent construction documents are going to be made available August fifth. Um, it's amazing that we're at that stage. Uh, they will be receiving bids October two thousand thirteen, October fourth, two thousand thirteen. Hoping to start construction November two thousand thirteen and hopefully occupying a new building, which is going to be an incredible resource for the town, uh, September two thousand fifteen.
Has that date changed of breaking ground in November? Well, I always have a September. Does it always November?
It was either November or then it went up to October. I think they're still in that ballpark.
Okay, so everything's.
It won't be later than November, I don't know.
The end of October, early November.
They, they, they're backing into, they have, you know, they have to hit the opening date of September, two thousand fifteen.
Wow, okay.
Um, the meeting, uh, we had was a, was a rousing meeting. It, it started late. They, they have, we have, um, the middle high school first and that went for about an hour and a half, two hours, I forget. And then on that, we went into the Pembroke and that meeting got out at, I think, eleven-thirty at night. So, um, people were tired.
Eleven-thirty.
But it, it was a great meeting. Um, it, it was a meeting where, um, there was a lot of discussion about, um, uh, the, the, a queuing issue. And, um, it, it remains now where, uh, they, um, the administration, um, will be needing to, uh, come up and strategize with, uh, a queuing approach that isn't necessarily like the way it has existed in the past.
So is this with both pickup and drop off?
This one is particularly with, um, pickup. This is about pickup.
Drop-ups never really been an issue on either.
Yeah, there was just a whole discussion about the current design and how, how much room there was for pickup. Um, and in that discussion, it, it concluded with that, um, the administration, you know, I think Margaret was saying that she doesn't even really want that kind of long queue.
Right now, the problem is there's not very many parking spaces, right? So you have to go.
In the existing.
And, and I think the thinking is that the parking is like tripled anyway. It, but, right, yeah, I mean, so I think Margaret was talking about the possibility of not setting up a, if, if there's any queuing system, it would be only certain grades and that other people would be expected to park.
And then walk up.
Yeah. So I, I think Rob's right. You know, the committee voted to, to, Rob, Rob and his expertise had, had a few questions about the, the way the scenario was, was looking, if it was going to be used in the current configuration as it is right now. And the committee did end up voting to leave it in the design, but obviously, we're all mindful of Rob's concern. He has expertise in this area. But what it came down to is, you know, he, and Rob will work with us too. You know, how will the school manage to come up with a system that doesn't put us in the position where that queuing system backs up and becomes a problem? So, you know, I think it, he's right. It, it's beyond the building committee at this point. And now it's kind of fallen in our, in our bailiwick to come up with a solution.
It's pretty amazing. I mean, so the construction documents are done and, um, you know, the discussion process doesn't always feel good, I know, for some people. Um, uh, but, uh, it, um, it, it's gone, I think, just the way it's supposed to have gone. And, uh, it's going to be, it's going to be a great project.
We're excited for it.
Yes, very excited.
Well, thank you for that update. Rob?
Oh, middle high school? Nothing to really update on that.
Yeah.
Right.
There's a, the next meeting, yeah, there will be, but there's really no update on that.
Okay.
And then in, in August, whatever date we agree on, um, Rob, and, well, actually, Michelle and Ellie probably will come.
Yep.
And, uh, Rob will assist, I'm sure, in, uh, giving you a really good update. So, because there's a lot that's changed.
Yeah.
Good.
Um, and it's really important, we think, for the school committee to see the drawings and see the changes and hear about the colors and, and that as well. So that will happen in, in our August meeting.
I, I know that this isn't on here and I just thought of it, but, um, the turf field, do we want to just talk about that a little bit?
Well, there's not really much to say. I mean, we're, we're hoping again in August to get that on the agenda. But we're, we're trying to, um, you know, there's a little subgroup of the turf committee that was, is working on the, the design, the design, RFQs. And I think it, it's, it's lost its, it's lost its luster here for, so I'm not quite sure. I will follow back up with, Sandy Garrity had said she was, um, she had been, um, in the hospital, so she wasn't able to follow through. I know Rob had put some things in place to kind of get some people's reaction. I don't know if you received any.
No, um, I, I gave a call. What I did is I took Joan's, uh, draft RFP, RFQ, and I took that as the starting point and it was a ton of work. And, um, I moved it into what I would consider about a ninety-five percent complete RFP, RFQ, and then sent it back off to Sandy, um, and Mike Farrell, who is the subcommittee.
Okay.
Um, I believe I copied you, Carol.
Yep, I did see it, yeah.
And, and, and suggested that everybody take a look at it, come up with their final comments. And then we need to get together as a group to finalize it, so then it can be issued. And I put together a schedule in that, um, which off the top of my head, I can't recall what it was. Uh, but there is a schedule there that we have to meet. So, um, if you could contact Mike. Um, because he's really the point.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay, will do. Okay, moving on to, um, new business?
Yep. Acceptance of PTA donation. Um, and that, um, was to be used towards the middle school jump up and go program, which I think is a great thing that the PTA does is support that program. Um, and that's in the amount of one thousand eighty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. So the chair will entertain a motion to accept the Georgetown PTA donation of one thousand eighty-seven dollars, fifty-seven cents to be used towards the middle school jump up and go program.
So moved?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Georgetown PTA.
Do we know if that's above and beyond what, what they allot the middle school?
That is one of the, that is part of what they're allotting.
That's nice. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think in September, um, we ought to invite Jill and Jennifer, um, to, to come and, you know, kind of lay out what they've got planned for the year. I met with them and, um, you know, they're, they got some pretty good ideas and, you know, but it's always good to have them come up and give, give a, an overview for you. So we can do that in September.
Yeah, Jennifer has contacted me, so she, we were going to try and figure out a date for that.
Yeah, I, I have her coming to talk with the administrators because I want her to, to run some things by them and, you know, get their, get their support for some things. So she's planning to do that as well.
Okay, and then we have some surplus materials?
We do, we do. Um, so the Pearlie librarian has identified two pieces of outdated technology. I guess there's a camcorder and a projector, um, that have outlived their useful life. So we're asking the committee to declare them surplus and we'll dispose of them appropriately.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to properly dispose of the surplus items listed by the Pearlie librarian as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the second is, uh, declaring some, um, old textbooks that are no longer used. Like there, some of them are nineteen nineties and they're just, you know, sometimes textbooks, the content doesn't really change. But sometimes they become so old and tattered that, you know, that, you know, you can't, you just can't use them anymore. And, uh, we, I have to tell you, we use our textbooks until they're beyond their useful life.
Sure, these are extremely old.
Yes, these are no, these are not. So, um, we would like to request that you dispose these, uh, surplus. And we, as, close the surplus and we can dispose them properly.
So the chair will entertain a motion to properly dispose of the surplus items listed by Georgetown Middle High School staff as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I think, um, we are all set for, um, this regular meeting. But we are going to go into executive session and we will not be returning. So the chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session under master and law, chapter thirty, section twenty-one, paragraph two, negotiations with the non-union personnel. And that requires a roll call vote. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 Okay.
You're in executive session.
Thank you.
Oh, are you going to, are you coming back in?
No, I did say no.